So that means we are started, we that it works there. Um, so if you would please, the first order of business will have miss do a roll call for us, please, so we can have an acknowledgement. Who is, who is present?
Alderman Carver.
How sad I did hear.
Not here.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Here.
Alderman Little.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
All right, we have Alderman Carver walking up as we are now, so just pardon if you would show him present. Carver, would you say present just to fill bill?
Ma'am.
Would you say present just to fill the
Present.
video wise? All right, thank you. Okay, with that, I will call this meeting to order. This is our regular meeting. This is our first meeting of, uh, January twenty twenty one. Happy to have everyone here. Our first order of business will be to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will follow that with invocation delivered by Alderman Sistrunk and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Sistrunk, if you would be so kind.
Thank you. This is a prayer for our new year. Alderman, you make all things new. You bring hope alive in our hearts and cause our spirits to be born again. Thank you for this new year, for all the potential it holds. Come and kindle in us a mighty flame so that in our time, many will see the wonder of God and live forever to praise your glorious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you being here, this being our first meeting of twenty twenty one, which we expect a much better year than twenty twenty was. Fingers crossed on all that. Um, what we will start with will be consideration of the agenda and consent items. Do I have any changes to either of those? And I will start with Alderman Carver. Any changes to the agenda or consent agenda?
The only one that I'm gonna ask to be removed from consent was a call for a hearing to amend on the mayor's business, uh, item B, consideration of causing a first couple hearings for minutes to get start with COVID-19. Uh, just ask for that to be removed with consent, please.
Okay, removed from consent. All right, any other, no other changes?
No ma'am.
All right, thank you. Alderman Sistrunk.
No changes.
All right, thank you. Alderman Little, any changes to the agenda, consent, or, um, regular agenda?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker, any changes?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty.
No ma'am, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
No ma'am, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn, any changes?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the consented items as revised.
Make such a motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Beatty. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous. And with that, I will read the consented items, uh, for the record. First is consideration of the minutes of the December eleventh, twenty twenty work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Under mayor's business, we have consideration of extending the proclamation of a local emergency due to the COVID nineteen virus for an additional thirty days. Under engineering, we have consideration of professional services supplemental agreement number two with Kenley Horn and Associates, Inc. for the build grant project related to preliminary engineering services and authorization for the mayor to execute the contract after approval of MDOT and FHWA. Number two is consideration professional services supplemental agreement number three with Kenley Horn and Associates, Inc. for the bu- for the build grant project related to preliminary engineering services and authorization for the mayor to execute the contract after approval of MDOT and FW- FHWA. Under finance administration, number two is consideration to approve the list of city of Starkville unmarked cars for fiscal year twenty twenty one. Number three is consideration of the restructuring of an existing fire loan for a Humper truck with various required equipment with U.S. Bank for Government Leasing and Finance, Inc. at a lower rate of one six nine percent. Under the fire department, we have request permission to allow the Starkville Fire Department to accept eight thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars for county foundation, Inc. grant to be used to purchase a thermal camera. Under HR, number one is request authorization to hire Tonya Black McWherter as a certified police officer in the Starkville Police Department. Number two is request authorization to hire Dylan Bowers as a reserve police officer in Starkville Police Department. And police division, uh, I'm sorry, under the police department, we have, under police division, request authorization to apply with the Office of Justice Program in the area of Edward, of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, for twenty-five thousand dollars in one hundred percent reimbursable funds in the area of hotspot policing overtime and an additional twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for hotspot policing equipment. Under the sanitation department, we have request authorization of the best quote in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars for the purchase of a six-inch high green vinyl coated chain link fence with a thirty-foot wide double swing gate from Columbus Spence Company with the only quote offering green vinyl coating, including installation around proposed recycling containers. And under utilities, we have number one, request approval to accept the lowest invest bids received for January one, twenty twenty one through June thirty, twenty twenty one source of supply listing for Starkville Utilities, Electric Division and Water Division. And number two is request authorization to enter into an agreement with Prasoc Dirt Construction LLC for development outside of the city limits that will connect to the city water supply. And that includes the list of items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, mayor.
I'm happy to do that. Uh, next item is announcements and comments, uh, stark mayor's comments. Obviously, we'll say happy new year to everyone, uh, and glad to have everyone with us. Um, we had, uh, we ended our year. I want to give, uh, a shout out to our electrical, uh, work worker per people. The last thing that happened on the last night of the new year, of the old year, was, uh, two electrical outages. So our guys were out in the, the rain and the cold, and they were putting us back online. So we appreciated, one was due to a tree and the other one was due to something technical that I don't understand at the Southwest substation. So, uh, anyway, they, they did great work and we appreciate them being back, uh, being able to do that at, uh, in the, under those inclement circumstances. So thank you for that. Um, and then I also wanted to highlight, I got, I got a letter today from three young gentlemen, the Dunn, the Dunn boys and, uh, Mr. T. Hand, asking for a skate park in the city of Starkville. And I think that that is notable in large part because these kids took it upon themselves to do this and they came to me and made a presentation. Um, and so I think that is one of the things that we would love to look at and see how we might be able to, to do something creative. I've asked Mr. Dougherty to take a look at what we might be able to do from a skate park perspective because, uh, I think that would be a fun thing for us to add programming for our, for our kids. So I want to give a shout out to them for having the initiative to come forward and, and meet with me and, and, uh, talk about that. So, uh, and that is all I have. So, uh, anything from board members? Alderman Carver, anything for you for comments?
No ma'am.
Alderman Sistrunk.
I have, I have two things. One, the young Mr. Duns, uh, have not only brought that to your attention, I believe they have started a fundraising campaign to help with this project. So when the time comes, there may be some outside assistance. Um, I don't know that it will be enough, but every penny counts, right? And two, um, I, I understand that the COVID nineteen vaccinations are now, um, rolling out to groups other than healthcare workers, which was the first group that, um, they were made available to. There's a lot of confusion about, um, about that rollout. And I would encourage anyone who's interested in information, in information, um, check the Mississippi State Department of Health's website or touch base with the Octave County Emergency Management Association, uh, Association? And, and or our local health department. Um, I, I encourage everybody to, to get that vaccination, but just make sure that you have good information as you go about that process.
Thank you, ma'am. Alderman Little.
No ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty.
Come on in, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, mayor, thank you.
And Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, next on our agenda is citizens' comments. This is a point in time when people can come forward, you have three minutes to speak to the board about any particular subject matter that you like. Um, and this is normally not something that's already on the agenda, such as the public hearings that are falling under this. And we normally do not necessarily engage in conversation about it. It is an opportunity for mostly a one-way flow of conversation, or the flow of information, so.
Hello, good evening, my name is Alvin, happy new year, day one. Um, to the mayor, to the COC, to the IC, uh, under member, any, any? Um, the year hopefully will be better than our, uh, last year. But we got a few things that we need to be twice as loud in our videos. Um, outgoing president, uh, he's doing all he can to, uh, cause service. So that, that's gonna be hard on the community department and everyone else, but pretty much for us. Um, the hospital, um, the COVID unit, uh, they are stressed out, they with their people. We have a lot of clinics that if we could go to the clinic and still the hospital because they're working, uh, overtime to try to deal with the COVID patients. And, uh, they are running out of space, so if you can go to the, uh, other clinics that we have, they'll help them out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Anyone else wishing to make citizens' comments? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll close it as citizens' comments. We have no public appearances this evening. Our first order of business will be public hearing and consideration of SE twenty dash nineteen. This is a request for a special exception for deviation from the requirement to have street facing primary entrance for a proposed convenience store. And Mr. Haveland is gonna make that presentation, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
SE twenty dash nineteen, this is a request by Pan American Engineers LLC on behalf of Murphy Oil USA for a special exception for deviating from the requirement at the street facing primary entrance for a proposed convenience store. The property is currently zoned C commercial and I can see on the slide is the Murphy's gas station that's, uh, right in between Highway twelve and Walmart Chupers Center. The plan is to completely remove that existing structure and then build a whole new one. The proposed new store has two primary entrances on the side of the building adjacent to the gas pumps. And due to the location of the proposed cooler on the front of the building, the front of the building cannot be used as a primary entrance. And the front is shown there in the yellow and that is the part that is facing Highway twelve. Section seven point two point F one, which is on page seven dash four of the UDC, requires a street facing primary entrance along the street. Section three point four point one states that any requests to deviate from the use standards or development standards required that are non-dimensional in nature are to be reviewed as a special exception request. This is an image of the proposed structure, uh, the current proposal. Architecture review has commented on the proposed building. Comment number three addresses the orientation of the building and the reviewer basically has, uh, no issues with the orientation. Sections three point four point one of the UDC list eight criteria to review and approve of the special exception. The criteria listed in the staff report are also on the screen for reference. The request was noticed in accordance with section three point four point three. Two property owners of record within a hundred and sixty feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request. A legal ad was published in Starkville Daily News on November eighteen, twenty twenty, and a sign posted on the property. As of this date, the planning office has received no response to the notification. And in the opinion of the planning department, the proposed deviation associated with special exception request could meet the criteria for special exception review and approval. The majority of buildings that are along Highway twelve do face the street with their primary entrance. Um, but unlike the majority of the buildings, this building doesn't take access directly to Highway twelve. It's actually accessed through the Walmart property, it's real close to the interchange with twenty five. As, uh, at the December eighth, twenty twenty Planning Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. Was there any questions?
All right, thank you. Um, the applicant is here, because they came up, yes. Uh, if you would like to come forward, identify yourself, please, and we'll see if there are any questions from the board before we open it as a public hearing.
Good evening, mayor, and board, uh, I'm Ron Borbon, I'm with Pan American Engineers, I'm representing Murphy Oil on this side. And we're requesting, uh, this deviation, uh, because of the operation of the store and, and the property that, uh, Murphy has acquired. They first began with Walmart with the lease program where they leased the property, then Walmart came in two thousand and seven and had Murphy purchase the property. So we are limited to this, this property, but when we started out the program with Walmart, they obviously wanted to sell the majority of the merchandise, so they limited the square footage. So this original building is much smaller, uh, Alderman, two hundred square feet. We've since, that time, Murphy has worked out an agreement with Walmart to increase the size to fourteen hundred square feet. So there's certain sites that qualify, they look at the volume, demand, customer demand for fuel and, uh, their other retail items. And they consider it for what we call a range rebuild. So this one does qualify, they'd like to actually remove the existing building, canopy, tank parking lot, and totally reconstruct the site. So this is a benefit to the customers' benefits of their more pump items on this layout. Uh, there's a larger building to bring the retail items that, there's some that are outside of the store. If you went there today, bring those in. Uh, so as Walmart has allowed an increase up to fourteen hundred square feet, that's the maximum. So we have a prototypical building that's fourteen hundred square foot and such that the cooler and the internal layout of the building is such that the primary entrance is not facing the street. Uh, we actually have circulation and traffic that's routed along that front entrance. So for the way the station is laid out, the size of lot, and how the building has to be under canopy to fit the function, the entrance is on the side of the building. So that's what works best because the pumps are on that either side of the building. So just with the layout and the way it operates, we're requesting that we, we all approve or consider this for approvals for the, the station to function as it is laid out on the site plan. But other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about it.
Right, well, we'll see if there are, if there are any, any questions from board members? Alderman Carver?
I would just say there's gonna be a side entrance, I guess, it'll be with that, um, which will have been provided. I mean, is that pretty much the spec what, what will be built? And would the gas pumps, will they maintain the same, um, basically dimensions that they are now? Are you gonna add more gas pumps?
They are. I think there's four pumps now. This is an eight-pump layout is what we're proposing. So the footprint is slightly larger. Uh, we're restricted to that lot. Sometimes Walmart let us purchase additional property, but most of the time not. In this one, we're, we're limited to that size. We can fit an eight, using an eight-pump facility. So we have four pumps on each side of the building, as you can see. Uh, there's additional products on this, this new configuration. We're gonna have larger underground tanks, so we have fewer drops from the transport trucks. But they will offer an E zero, uh, which they have in all three, diesel, unleaded, and, and all the other at every pump. So more, I guess for the customer, there's more options to fuel. So it will be an upgrade if that's what you're asking, all, all the pumps, new canopy, and, uh, all the side. Thank you.
Alderman Sistrunk?
Um, the, the thing that I noticed when I was reading through the architectural review was, um, dealt with this, of the aesthetics of the building, color palette and that sort of thing. Um, did, did y'all discuss that in any, any detail, or is that part of?
That's not necessarily part of the, the front door orientation, but the, the comments based on architecture here are to be complied with.
All right, okay.
I am in receipt of those comments and we're in the process of revising the rendering to add this enhancement.
Perfect, thank you.
Alderman Little?
Uh, I like that monument sign, that's gonna look really well out there. Oh, I think it makes perfect sense what they're trying to do for that project. There's not really gonna be access from twelve, you've gotta come into the premises there on Walmart property to get to it. And it makes perfect sense, um, with their plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Alderman Walker?
Uh, just to say that I think this is the exact kind of case where you're, the special exception is what it's designed to do. I have no issues, uh, with this project and would look forward to supporting it with making sure that items one, two, and three are all approved from the architectural review.
All right, thank you. Alderman Beatty?
It's gonna be a nice upgrade from what y'all have, have out there now, in terms of function and, and also, you know, it's gonna look better. Tell me what the enhancements, enhancements that we were talking about on our, on the architecture review, what specifically, what, um, talked about a while ago, the?
That's, that's a typical, our store that is located, this is from the architecture review, uh, reviewer. I'm not sure what city this is in. I believe it's in Mississippi, though. But this is what he was talking about as far as enhancements. And so you can see like the detailing, uh,
What materials on it building, because it's got a brick, a brick roller.
On this one, it's like a brick at the bottom.
Right.
And then clearly heat is above that.
I can sign that for him. I'll put my phone.
And it has a monument, the standard is like just steel columns, and this one has the column surrounds. So that will match the facade of the building, the brick surrounds with the brick facade of the building.
And according to that, it says it's on Old Canton Road in Jackson, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comments, mayor, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No comments, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll take this opportunity to open it as a public hearing. If you could step back and let's see if anyone wishes to speak to this matter. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter now would be the opportunity, either for or against.
My name is Alvin. Uh, safety, uh, concerns. Uh, we got, you know, people coming out of the, uh, bypass. Uh, this won't be, uh, any problem, I mean, with locating, won't be no problem with the, uh, people coming out the bypass onto Twia or either. Uh, with the traffic rerouted, uh, during the construction, uh, highway.
All right, Mr. Haveland, would you respond to that?
There shouldn't be any issues, uh, because it's all access from the other site to anything that they're doing in there. It's kind of internal and it shouldn't affect anything external to the site.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak either for or against this particular item? Anyone else? If not, I will close it as a public hearing and, uh, we'll entertain a motion.
May I make such a motion?
I have a motion from Alderman Beatty for approval. Uh, do I have a second?
Second, mayor.
Uh, second from Alderman Vaughn, I believe I heard you first, sir. Thank you. All right, um, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right, it is unanimous. It is approved. Thank you. Absolutely, thank you. Welcome to town. All right, the next item is a public hearing, consideration of SE twenty twenty is a request for a special exception to allow for expansion of a non-conforming use in a T five D zoning district at one oh five Caldwell Street. Uh, Mr. Haveland, you'll carry this one as well?
Yes, SE twenty dash twenty, this is a request by William and Susan, Susan Strong to allow for the expansion of a non-conforming use at one oh five Caldwell Street. Uh, the non-conforming use is actually a single dwelling unit which is not permitted by rights in that district. The property is currently in a T five D. This is an illustration of the house with the addition to it. Uh, as you can see on the right side is a street and then the left side of the page is actually the rear yard. The after seeking a special exception to expand the dwelling on the rear of the house would be left on the sheet. The, the use chart in section thirteen point three of the UDC lists detached dwellings as not permitted in a T five D zoning district. Therefore, the existing detached dwelling is a legal non-conforming use. Section three point one seven point two point A of the UDC allows for the expansion of a non-conforming use if approved as part of a special exception or use exception. Since the request involves the expansion of a building, the special exception process is required. And this image is showing the difference between the, uh, existing and proposed. Existing is on the left side and the proposed is on the right, and the area in red is the expansion portion. So from the street, it's not going any closer or further away from the street. Section three point four point one of the UDC lists eight criteria to review and approve of the special exception. The criteria listed in the staff report and are on the screen. The request was noticed in accordance with section three point four point three E of the UDC. Seven property owners of record within a hundred and sixty feet of subject property were noticed directly by mail. A legal ad was published with the number twenty second, twenty twenty, and a sign posted on the property. As of this date, the planning office has received one phone call in support of the request. The, the call was received after the creation of the staff report for planning and zoning. And the call came from a neighbor to the south that owned a condo unit. In the opinion of the planning department, the proposed use associated with special exception could meet the criteria for special exception review and approval. And at the December eighth, twenty twenty Planning Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Haveland. And I know that, uh, either one or both of you would like to come up. The, the applicants are in the audience, so if you would, anything you'd like to share with the board?
Definitely.
Yeah, we just, thank you, appreciate it.
So, uh, one oh five Caldwell is a beautiful eighty-year-old little cottage, um, right down Caldwell Street. It's kind of tucked right behind the Presbyterian Church and they're one-way drive out. It won't impede or, or, or do anything different to the street. Um, we're, we bought the property in hopes of making it our favorite home. Our three daughters graduate from Mississippi State, two of my son-in-laws graduate from Mississippi State. I'm just trying to have a nice, uh, family home here. I just moved my father into the, uh, retirement, into, um,
Clayburn.
Clayburn. And so we're just trying to build a nice, uh, family home and expand it about eight hundred square feet.
Okay, all right, let's see if there are any questions. Any questions from, uh, the Alderman? Alderman Carver?
No ma'am.
Alderman Sistrunk?
None, thank you.
Alderman Little?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
Which house is it on Caldwell, on east, east, west side?
It's, um, as you come off of Main Street.
Right.
It's the first house on the left.
Right.
Um, just past the church is, uh,
Kind of backed up the church property, right? I think that's great.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comments, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. If you would, if you step back, I'll see if there are any public, public comments. So I will open it as a public hearing at this point in time. Anyone wishing to speak to this particular item on the agenda now would be the opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing and, um, we will take a, well, I entertain a motion for?
May I make such a motion?
All right, I have a motion for approval from Alderman Beatty. Do I have a second? I have a second from Alderman Vaughn. Uh, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
And Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea. All right, it is unanimous. Thank you so much, and, uh, let's go over to the construction.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate y'all being and telling the, uh, the master, telling of MSU more. So, all right. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda will be the one that was removed. Uh, the consideration of calling for the first public hearing to city's code of ordinance is chapter ten, section ten dash thirty-six and ten dash forty to allow for brew pub exceptions to food sale requirements and to define brew pubs. Um, and this is an item that was put on the agenda to, um, see if we can, and right now the city of Starkville has a twenty-five percent food sales to gross, gross beverage sales requirement. And so this is an opportunity to, um, modify that so that if there is no, it's specific to brew pubs, so that if there is no desire to serve food, then that is not a necessity associated with that particular use. Uh, Alden Carver, questions about this?
Yeah, I just wanna know kind of what discussions have been made and what the thought process was. I, um, I don't know, you know, I'm more concerned with the president's standpoint of never seeing a place where alcohol was sold or didn't have some type of threshold statewide. I think maybe twenty-five percent statewide, um, to offer the patrons of food choice if they're consuming alcohol or have some type of food choice. And also being a culinary type town, I'd be excited to see any time we have new opportunities, opportunities for culinary options, uh, type of establishment this is. So I guess, um, just sitting down tonight, I kinda wanna know who's had, what conversations of what a brew pub is. I know I read the definition and who came up with that, where that was, uh, thought of and why we're gonna do away with, uh, offering a patron a culinary experience.
I am happy to address that to the extent that we have a specific request coming from the, um, Spring Street. They want to have a brew pub and the cigar lounge, and they are not interested in serving food associated with that. Um, and our requirement, as it stands right now, I asked Mr. Latimer to do the research because the state does have a twenty-five percent requirement for, uh, food to gross sales. And, uh, according to his, and he, I'll let him speak in a moment, but according to his research and his, um, analysis, the requirement is not, is specifically not geared to brew pubs. So brew pubs are an exception to that particular requirement. We have put this, uh, supposedly in the leisure and recreation district only, so it is confined to that area that we have also served, uh, a change in our smoking ordinance to allow for this particular establishment to do that as well. So I understand, I'm always eager to have new restaurants in, in the community, but in this case, if it's gonna go in a smoking environment, then I'm not so interested in having food in our, in our community because that's, that would sort of undermine the smoke, smoke aspect of this, um, because that was part of, that was part of the thought process of allowing the smoking, um, cigar shop definition. So that was where that came from. And Mr. Latimer, if you would, share your research, please, now that I have given a very layperson's information.
Alden Carver, we looked at this pretty hard last week and state law has carved out an exception for brew pubs when it comes to the twenty-five percent rule. Twenty-five percent rule applies to on-premises retail sellers of quote-unquote alcoholic beverages. And you would think that beer would fall under the definition of alcoholic beverage, but it does not. It's carved out in state law to be a separate and distinct entity, and that twenty-five percent rule does not apply to brew pubs. And so I do believe this complies with state law, so it'll just be a public policy decision about whether the board wants to allow this. Because what this does is it will allow this brew pub to operate or any brew pub to operate in the leisure and recreation district as it's currently proposed. And don't get too hung up on the definit, definition of brew pub in the packet today. I think that's gonna change a little bit. We want to make it identical to how brew pub is described under the Mississippi Code section to make sure we align with state law to the T.
Yeah. I'd just say on the record, I'm probably gonna vote against this and this for multiple reasons. One is, uh, the precedent that it sets within the community, um, a pleading standpoint to offer or not offer patrons something, um, you know, there's a reason that the threshold statewide for alcohol consumption, twenty-five percent versus gross sales of beverage. Um, there's no other bar in town that doesn't do this. And thirdly is, uh, the fact that I would be very interested in culinary, uh, options provided to patrons here. I mean, this is obviously a state-owned, uh, place in town, downtown. I can't imagine somebody going to a place downtown, uh, and having a beverage option and not having a food option. So that's where I'm leaning on this. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, Alden Sishtrow, would you like to make some comments associated with?
Uh, the only real comment I have is, is somewhat of a question, but this is, as you said, is a niche, um, um, situation. Um, we're trying to marry it to the state liquor, um, exception for brew pub. And if they decided that they wished to do food later, they could. If they decided they wish to have, um, um, other alcoholic beverages, then that will trip into the state's requirement for food.
Yes, ma'am. The exception is beer and light wine. So if you have beer, eight percent alcohol content by weight, or wine, five percent alcohol content, those can be sold without the twenty-five percent food rule. But if you break out of that box, then the twenty-five percent food rule kicks in.
Thank you.
Okay. Alden Little?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Alden Walker?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Briefly, uh, city attorney, could you state what you just said again? And so there's a limit on the percentage of alcohol in the beer? Yes. Let me, uh, pull the exact definition and quote the statute that's defined in, uh, in So I'm looking at, uh, code section sixty-seven, three dash three, and beer is defined as a malt beverage as defined in the Federal Alcohol Administration Act and any rules and regulations adopted pursuant to such act of an alcoholic content of not more than eight percent by weight. And light wine is defined as wine of an alcoholic content of not more than five percent by weight. And those items are in title sixty-seven, chapter three, which is separate and distinct from title sixty-seven, chapter one. Chapter one is the twenty-five percent rule for alcoholic beverage sellers of everything but light wine and beer. Chapter three governs light wine and beer and brew pubs and doesn't compel the twenty-five percent rule. Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of, uh, having a, a calling for approving to have a public hearing on this issue. I do think that it provides some unique challenges, uh, perhaps that, that will need to be addressed. I think first and foremost will be, uh, monitoring to make sure that the brew pub is gonna be doing microbrewing to make sure that the alcohol content, uh, stays in state law threshold and to make sure that education for the other restaurant slash bar owners in town, uh, understand the clear distinction that if they would like to change their business model to become a brew pub, what the ramifications are and what the outline of how that would fall into what they would like to do if they are located within the art and leisure district. Is that correct? That's correct. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alden Walker. Alden Beatty? Any comments?
Yes, Mayor, I'll just, I've got a couple of questions. So Spring Street Cigars is not gonna get a liquor license and, and serve alcohol in the, what we term alcohol, wine, spirits type, um, she would require twenty-five percent food component, correct?
Correct. As I read the statutes, Alderman, they would have to be a licensed and permitted beer seller, not a alcoholic beverage seller, which excludes beer.
So the beer thing now is up to eight percent on beer, five percent on light wine.
That's correct.
Now, will this place have, uh, this capital, will this place have tanks? Is it gonna have tanks and sure enough, brew pub?
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Alden Vaughn?
No comments, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I am gonna make one more comment. Um, I think it's a really cool vibe. None, not a location where I will ever wander into because I don't like the smell of smoke and I don't drink beer. But what I will say is if y'all try to make it into a restaurant of some kind, that is not gonna fly because that's one of the things that, from our perspective, smoking and eating are not supposed to go together. So, um, let me, let me say that up front, other than popcorn, peanuts, and whatever else y'all might wanna throw at somebody as it relates to that. So just, that's just kind of my comment. So, but anyway, I think it's a way cool vibe and, uh, I, I hope that it all, that all goes well. So, uh, thank you for bringing it, bringing it into the community. Um, all right. With that, we need a motion to-
Approve.
All right. I have a motion to, to approve calling for the first public hearing. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second from Alden Beatty. Uh, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alden Carver.
Yea.
Alden Sishtrow.
Yea.
Alden Little.
Yea.
Alden Walker.
Yea.
Alden Beatty.
Yea.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea. Alden Vaughn.
Yea.
Yea.
All right. By vote of six to one, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. Moving along, the next, I believe, and last item of, of, uh, action for us this evening is going to be the claim socket. Do I have a motion on the claim socket?
First of all?
I have a motion for Alden Sishtrow. Do I have a second?
I have a second, Danny.
Thank you, Alden Beatty. All right. Uh, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alden Carver.
Yea.
Alden Sishtrow.
Yea.
Alden Little.
Yea.
Alden Walker.
Yea.
Alden Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Nay.
All right. Thank you.[1579.82]